January fourteenth, twenty twenty one. And I'd like to welcome you to the Finley City School Board of Education Special Meeting. So to begin, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And Mr. Hammond, would you take the role, please?
Certainly. Mr. Aldrich.
Here.
Mr. Cooper.
Here.
Ms. Iyer.
Here.
Mrs. Russell.
Here.
And Dr. Steven Aller Wilson.
Here. Thank you. Can we all please stand or turn accordingly to do the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We basically have one item today. Our discussion item and Mr. Roth, I believe, is going to say a few words before we begin the actual item.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Steven Aller Wilson. Prior to the discussion items, I received a request for, from the F E A President Becky Posada Angela Ditman. They will be joining me here momentarily to address the board. So I will let them into, into the room here.
Morning, sorry.
Morning.
Morning.
Is that our turn to speak already?
It is.
Oh, okay. We just wanted to come and talk on behalf of us teachers. And decisions that you guys have to make, understanding that it's not an easy decision that anybody has to make. But to, we have thoroughly looked through the
Research?
Research that was done. With the seven schools in Ohio to say that kids don't need to be quarantined anymore. And I appreciate the science of it and I'm happy that, of the results that they found. But in that same research, it also states that if you are going to choose and ignore the six-foot guideline, then it's very important that you have testing protocol in place. And so the schools that were not following the six-foot guideline tested their students four days a week. The schools that were following six-foot guideline tested their students two days a week. So we're not going to have any of those guidelines in place, I'm assuming. Considering that I don't think that parents would want to do that necessarily, nor do I feel that our district has the funds to pay for that kind of testing. So I guess some of the things we would like to really have discussed are what are we doing to really make sure that the teachers and the students are safe? I don't know of any of you that have spoken to the teachers. We've talked to a ton of teachers in the last week and they're not comfortable. They don't feel safe sending the kids back five days a week without three-foot distance in most rooms. It's not going to be possible. And for their own health. And that's very concerning. And it's concerning that the board hasn't reached out to us or to other teachers that we've spoken to that are not your friends, but actually reached out to teachers and just to see what's it like in your room? How are you going to be able to do this? How's this going to work out? Where are we? What can I do for you? And but yet going to be here making that decision this morning is very frustrating from a teacher's perspective.
That we're going into this with the highest numbers that we have across the country, across the state. When we have a new strain of coronavirus that is suspected to be more easily transmittable. There's a research in England right now that says suggesting that students, that younger people are the ones that are transmitting this new strain. Is very concerning. That, speaking as a parent, that my child now is going to be in a science classroom where she will have less than a foot of space between her and two to three other students, depending on where they're at. As a parent, I can't abide by that, especially since that's not what we agreed upon at the beginning of the year. I, I can't even fathom putting my daughter's safety at risk. When now we're getting information back that students that have had coronavirus are now having lung and heart issues. I, I just, I, I, I feel like this defies all logic of what we've been doing. We're going, we're not even putting our toe in. It's like diving into a lake and you don't know the depth of it. That's just not, that's just idiotic. We would never do that because chances are you're going to break your damn neck. And we're diving in headfirst and we don't have a clue at how deep the water is. Actually, we do have a little bit of a clue. And everything shows that things are getting worse, not better. And I just, I, I'm just, I'm awake at night over this. And I'm awake at night that every, it seems that every couple of months, we have to have the same argument.
But in the end, I mean, I think every teacher that we spoke to in the last week, all want their kid back. I mean,
Oh, that is very obvious.
So do, I, I feel like hybrid is the least
Desirable.
Desirable.
The hardest.
Teachers and students, actually. But again, I haven't spoken to anybody about how remote's going. Nobody's asked, but remote has actually been a thousand times better than I ever imagined for the kids, for sure. And what they're getting. But I think that if, if we have testing protocol in place, we're able to do those things that it suggests in the study, one hundred percent we're on board. We don't have that in place, there's a problem.
We, we also have an issue of lunches. There's no way to control this at lunch. There's no way to control this during transitional times during classes. We have the arts, especially music and choir classes that pose additional risks, you know?
Those are the things that need to be looked at.
And please don't misunderstand anything we're saying about not wanting to see students. I don't want it misconstrued that we don't want to be back with students. But we have to take in a point, the safety of everything and
Of our teachers as well as our students.
And with, with it being, there's, there's other problems. We're two, two months out from being completely inoculated with the vaccine, right?
For teachers.
For teachers. And any, well, staffing, building staffing, not just teachers. And we, we, we still have a sub shortage. That, that hasn't gone away. And now we're putting teachers at risk and there's no buffer of sick days. If they get sick or quarantined and it's a young parent who has children and no sick days, what do they do? It's an unnecessary risk. That's all.
Before I just Do we have the ability to ask a question?
That's what I was going to say, Mr. Cooper, before Angela and Becky leave us. Are there any questions you would like to address with our co-presidents?
Is it up to Kathy whether we can ask questions or not?
No, you can ask questions, Matt. That's fine.
All right. I appreciate you guys coming in today. I just had a couple of questions in regards to your comments that you made. One, are you here representing a majority of your teachers?
Overwhelmingly, yes.
Okay, because all of us on the board have received emails from teachers that are remote only, hybrid, and a bunch of them that have said four or five days as well. So I just wanted to get an idea of what percentage of your teachers feel that they're unsafe or that want to stay in a certain model?
Just from who we've talked to, I would say the majority of teachers would prefer to be in hybrid, even though it's I, I don't think that's the best solution, but I do understand we want to see our kids, we want them in the rooms. I get that.
Well, what I'm saying is that emails that we've received have been remote, hybrid. Some teachers have emailed us with a different hybrid, like a modified hybrid. And then some of your teachers have said, we want to be in school four days, and others have said five days. It's, it's the same division that we're seeing amongst the population in general where, you know, some parents don't feel safe, some think we should be in school five days. I just wanted to know if you did any kind of survey to figure out exactly what position you guys are taking in this?
No. There wasn't a survey at one school. The one school said one hundred percent, every single teacher does not feel safe with five back, five days back. Also that they didn't feel like they, their health was a concern. That, and that was big old hill. And then other than that, it's just from people that we've talked to, because this has been just so fast that honestly, like it, other than talking to teachers and doing surveys on how things are going typically, as far as do you, where do you think that things are going to be on the twenty-fifth? No, I'm happy to do that. Quite honestly, I think that that's probably something that should have been done by the district to all employees. I mean, we have a portion of who's employed by the district, but.
Sure. The other question I have for you is
They send it to us too. And so we have read a lot of that and I do agree, there is a mix. I feel like most people feel the happy medium is the hybrid. Whether or not they think that's the best, they feel it's the compromise that works best.
Okay. The other question I have for you is, have you guys been pulling local data as far as active cases, hospitalizations, ICU admissions, anything like that?
We have not looked at that since around Christmas time.
Because a, a common theme that I've seen in some of these emails is that cases in Hancock County continue to go up and we're not in any kind of better position, but every, every number that we've received from Hancock County Public Health Department has suggested that our numbers are declining. In fact, just within the last week, we've dropped fifty active cases. We've cut our hospitalizations in half from the average of thirty-two point six-five. And our highest hospitalizations during this, what I would consider a peak, was forty-four and we're down to sixteen. So I would say we're heading in the right direction in Hancock County. I just, a lot of the, a lot of the emails had almost the same language in them that cases continue to increase in Hancock County and I don't necessarily think that that's accurate.
I did see that.
And what I would, what I would challenge with that is that, okay, if, if, if they're going down, that's fabulous. That's what we want. Are we willing to reverse the measures that we've taken place to be a part of that process of keeping numbers at a minimum or getting numbers dropped? I, I want this to go away as much as anybody. But to turn everything, to completely do a one-eighty reversal seems to defy the fact, you know? If we're, if our numbers are dropping, why aren't we staying the course? Why would we change it?
Well, that would be my other question to you, because I did read a, a study out of Tulane University that says reopening K-12 schools did not increase hospitalization when COVID cases were low. And I did look through that study and see how they did it. But my other question to you is if, while we were in hybrid for all grades, while we were in four days, everybody backed, and then we went to remote, the data has showed us, the, the, the numbers we're reading from Hancock County Public Health Department show that more of our students are testing positive in the remote model. Can you explain that?
Christmas and giving New Year's. Yes, I can.
Well, it happened before Christmas. I think the highest one for the high school, including staff, staff, the highest number was two on January sixth. The highest positive for high school was eight for students on December twenty-second and twenty-third. I would argue not only could it be the holidays, but I would say, as I've always said, kids are safer in schools and they're being a hundred percent compliant with mask-wearing at schools. I see it with my kids, specifically my eighth grader and, and other people around the neighborhoods or at the grocery store. They do their schooling and because they don't have that socialization, they're going to hang out with friends and they're letting their guard down. And I don't, I don't have data to support that's what's going on. I mean, I can just see that that's what's going on with our kids that are in the remote model. But I just wanted to pose that question to you because it's really striking to me that I looked through on Krista Updates, the, the COVID Dashboard Based on the Numbers at the Hancock County Public Health Department giver. And, you know, we can track them on a daily basis and we saw no significant impact to the elementary schools. We saw little to no impact on middle schools. And then we see an increase in high school staff and high school students when they're in the remote model, which leads me to believe that they're still socializing. So with the numbers the way they are, I thought maybe you would agree that kids are safer in schools because we're requiring them to wear masks.
They're still socializing. I mean, I think that they're still going to go out and socialize outside of school. They're still gonna, obviously, from Thanksgiving to New Year's is not the best time to be looking to see if it's going to go up or down because they're traveling and doing all kinds of things. But I do think we did see, when we saw spikes and issues was when we were at four days a week. And that's when they're supervised with masks and everything else. And that's when we're, that's the concern. That one hundred percent, I want my kids back every single day. Yes, you know how much easier that makes a teacher's job? I mean, it's insane, but.
No, I, I understand what you're saying and I, trust me, I, I support, I support you guys and I appreciate everything you guys have done. I, you know, if you, you said during your, your statement that, you know, remote has been wonderful. I can tell you from kids I've talked to and even sitting through class with my daughter, I would disagree. I think it's frustrating for her to go through that and she, you know, she struggles with it, just like I've heard from a lot of kids. So nothing's going to be perfect. I don't, I don't expect every kid across the district and every teacher across the district to tell the board or tell anybody that what we're doing is a hundred percent the right thing to do. And to be clear, you know, the board, I'm not speaking for the board, I'm speaking for my, for my own opinion, but nobody wanted to be thrown in this. Like this is, this is not fun for anybody. And we're trying to look through all these studies and all this data to figure out what's best for kids and what's best for teachers. And to say that we're being unsafe or that they feel unsafe, it's, it's kind of a, I would say a slap in the face to the board, because there's a lot of things that we're considering, even though you guys probably don't see it or don't. I mean, you, you didn't ask us where we're getting our numbers or how we're associating with the health department or, you know, what research are you looking at?
You hear that in front of you in Christa, Troy, Troy and Krista all the time. So that would be why I didn't ask you that. But to say that the teachers feel unsafe, that isn't, that's how they feel. I mean, so you don't, we don't get to say, well, I'm sorry that you shouldn't feel unsafe or I'm sorry, I'm already looking into this. That's how they feel. And I, I think that many teachers are upset that they don't feel like the board is taking in any consideration of them whatsoever.
Well, then let, let me ask you this then.
How they feel. And that's what we're here.
What, what would satisfy a majority of your teacher population to feel a hundred percent safe?
Oh, you're never going to have that, Matt. Yeah, I mean, you're not. Obviously, there's people on all different ends of the spectrum on this. But I think, I think going through, talking to them about all this stuff maybe would have helped. Having you guys go to different buildings, get on Zoom meetings with different buildings, say, this is what we're looking at. You guys getting out there and putting out that information could help them to understand where your thought process is and that you actually do care and understand about where they're headed. That's where so much of their frustration is. And I, I don't, you're not going to have everybody safe. But putting a hundred percent of kids back in a high school classroom with thirty kids where you're talking. I know the one teacher at Donnell wrote you guys and he said he has eighteen to twenty inches space because they're tables and they cannot be broken apart. That isn't safe even by the, the guidelines of what this new study is showing. And I, I just want to, the study is saying a child is only safe inside the barrier of the classroom as soon as they cross that threshold. Outside the classroom, they're still supposed to be quarantined. That just doesn't sit well and I'm not saying it's not true because I, I, I respect science and I listen to it. But to make a one-eighty jump like that, it's hard for people to feel comfortable with it, is my point. So I am very hopeful that everything in that study is very accurate and that it's not going to matter. But the fact of the matter is, is that we're jumping off a cliff in an environment in this country specifically that is untrusting. And everything with Corona has been untrusting. You hear, hear this, you hear this, you hear this. So then all of a sudden, just to say, oh, just, we're not going to quarantine any kids anymore, it doesn't matter. It's going to take a lot more than seven schools showing teachers that. So to say, we're just going to go five days, ignore the distancing rules and just go for it. That's concerning to teachers. That's my point. Whether it's safe or not, I hope it is. It just, you, you have to look at how, as a community, when we've dealt with this for almost a year with completely different rules, expectations and being told things, to just jump in and believe it because it's what we want to believe is concerning.
Well, and I would argue the same way too, because when we were looking to restart school, when we were waiting for guidance from the state on how we were allowed to reopen schools, the initial discussion was about masks. Social distancing was not really the deal. I mean, when we announced that we were possibly going back without masks, they said, well, you need to wear masks without social distancing. And then social distancing became the norm, you need a mask and social distancing. So I feel like we did a complete circle back to where we were at back in July and August, talking to the health department. So I appreciate you guys coming in here and, and talking to us. You know, when I, I'm very supportive of what you're doing as teachers. I know it's difficult and I know how it feels to feel unsafe. But I can assure you that I don't think anybody on the board is making decisions strictly to make you feel unsafe. We're, we're trying to make the best decision for our kids, for all of our staff and, and getting our students back in school. So I just wanted to let you know that because a lot of the emails were received from teachers. You know, said that we were, we were being unsafe to a certain extent, but they all had different ideas of what that meant. So I think that's just a general, a general deal amongst everybody. Everybody has a different interpretation of what's safe is.
And I just want to clarify, the communication process flows through the superintendent and the assistant superintendent. So the, the meetings we have pretty much weekly, bi-weekly, that information is shared with the board. I would not expect the board to, to, to meet with each building. That communication flows, flows through me. So when we have I do communicate that with the board.
I know, but I, I, my point is, is that if we want teachers to feel safe, you're at, the question was, how do we make teachers feel safe? That was one of my suggestions. Like, I, I think that everybody in this school district, ninety-nine point nine percent of teachers in this district have one hundred percent faith and trust in Troy and Krista. And the problem is, is that they feel that you guys are the ones making the decision and that they don't have that faith and trust in you because they don't have that relationship. And whether it's just because this is the way things work, I mean, it's just not how it seemed. So that's just one of my suggestions on how you can help make teachers feel more safe.
Well, just to be clear too, I did go to the high school and talk to a high school teacher after they presented to the board last time about their concerns about going back to school four days a week.
Yeah, I know you did.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, thank you for hearing us. Thank you for listening and hearing us.
Anything else for Becky and Angela before we move on to the discussion item?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you for having us.
Dr. Steven Aller Wilson, before we proceed to discussion, the return to in-person learning, I'd like to provide an update and some informational items, if that's okay with you.
Appreciate that, thank you.
You know, there's been some changes in the quarantine, close contact guidelines. I just want to make sure the board understands the information, most recent information we have is that students that are deemed to be a close contact of a COVID-positive person will no longer be quarantined from school as long as the contact was in a classroom and setting, masking and distancing were in place. Students would be quarantined from extracurriculars and outside school hours. But the quarantining, you know, at one point we saw, I believe it was a hundred and sixty-three students quarantined from a few positive cases. That would no longer be in place. You would be looking at a smaller number of quarantines and, and those students would be attend, allowed to attend in-person class as long as the masking is and other protocols in place. I just want to be clear on, on those new guidelines. Also, a vaccine update. Early survey results of our staff are showing approximately seventy percent of our staff is interested in receiving the vaccine when it is available. Latest information we have from Hancock Public Health was that the vaccine will be ready to be distributed early in February. We do continue to meet with public health every Wednesday and receive updates from Kareem Burdi and his staff. One other item, House Bill four oh nine. This bill permits districts to employ a substitute teacher according to the school's own educational requirements as long as all other statutory laws and administrative rules are satisfied. Krista and I are still exploring this. We believe this has the opportunity to increase our sub pool. No longer would a substitute candidate need to possess a bachelor's degree. We could set the minimum standards to be a high school diploma. And currently Krista and I have discussed, you know, a high school diploma, completion of a background check, an interview process with Krista or myself, and then approval of O D for them to receive what is an emergency license to have a sub license through the remainder of the school year. So hopefully that is something that will help us in the substitute shortage. So that is all the informational updates I had, Dr. Steven Aller Wilson.
Troy, can I ask you a question in regard to the guidance for quarantine from the state?
Yes, sir.
So just to be clear So just to be clear, if a student comes in close contact with a positive COVID student, they don't need to quarantine except for everything outside the classroom. They can still come to school?
Correct.
Now, what's that language say in regards to our teaching staff?
It's the same language. Staff is included. They would not, they would be allowed to attend a classroom as well.
And we did receive clarification from ODH and Hancock Public Health regarding that language?
Correct.
Okay.
It's been updated, I believe, after the governor made his announcement. It's been updated twice.
Okay. Thank you.
I do have a question as well, Troy. So when, when it comes to our teachers, when they're in, in their classroom, is there guidance that you have given that says, you know, try to maintain as much distance as we, as we can to limit any type of exposure as well for our staff?
Yeah, we have several different documents. We did have the, we did institute the mask mandate and put that in policy. So, yeah, they are aware of, and our principals are aware of, as much distance as possible.
Great. Great. Thank you.
Dr. Steven, I believe you were trying to speak earlier and you were muted before Mr. Aldrich spoke.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Roth. Yes, I was temporarily muted there. Any other questions for Mr. Roth as far as, you know, background or information that we have? And Mr. Roth has done a great job communicating information to us on a daily basis, sometimes more than once or twice a day. So thank you. So I, I feel like we are getting a lot of information, you know, the educational sources, you know, that we need to follow guidance, as well as the Health Department.
Yeah, I, I do have a couple more questions. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to hold anybody up. This is an important decision we're about to make. But I did want to ask Mrs. Miller a question about, when we were quarantining 162 people and beyond and, you know, different, in the middle school, specifically in the high school, how many of those quarantined people do we know of that came back positive?
I can tell you the positives that we had coming out of those quarantines were primarily isolated to those classrooms who were unable to, to wear masks or outside of school settings or extracurriculars where masks can't be worn.
So our data is, is basically aligning with what the new quarantine guidance has said, that there was no discernible difference between whether you were a close contact or further away, as long as masks were being worn?
It definitely seemed that our data indicates that masks, because the masks are the important variable. Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I had one more question for Troy, but I forgot what it was, so I'll defer to anybody else.
Any other board members' questions, comments?
Actually, Troy, what, what model does Hancock Public Health recommend we come back to school in? If we return, if we return kids to the classroom, what are they suggesting?
When we spoke with them, they, they were not too in favor of the five-day-per-week model. I did discuss with them a four-day model with Wednesday being the remote day, sort of a buffer day. They were more receptive to that. And as long as we continue to monitor data, that we have the ability to go backwards. So, Mr. Cooper, with that being said, my recommendation to the board would be for K-12 to return to in-person learning, four days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, beginning on January 25th. Trojan Academy students would continue to attend remotely through Trojan Academy. And for preschool students with the, the difficulty of children ages three and four to, to maintain mask-wearing, I would recommend that preschool at this time stay in their current hybrid model.
Troy, this being the beginning of a semester coming up, January 25th, do people, do parents and students have the option to go to Trojan Academy or come back to brick and mortar?
Yes. The abilities to get into Trojan Academy would just be based on enrollment and numbers and staffing. We do have a number of students that will be returning from Trojan Academy back to brick and mortar. And also, Mr. Cooper, we still have the Finley Learning Center available as an option for grades six through 12.
Troy, I might be jumping ahead just a little bit, but if a student wishes to make a change, you know, if they know they want to come back to brick and mortar, or if they would like to go to Trojan Academy and/or FLC, what's the procedure to let you know so that you all have a count earlier than just, you know, the first day we'd be back?
Yeah, they, they contact their building principal, and they, they will walk them through the procedures.
And then they will be able to be notified? You said that, you know, a certain amount, it might depend on staffing, things like that, but, but at what point would they be able to be notified, you know, whether they will be able to move or not? Can we, do we know that yet? Because I, I realize you don't know exactly, you know, what the change might be right this minute.
We're, we're still monitoring that data. We did send out a survey to Trojan Academy parents to get a commitment to continue for the second semester. We do have a meeting scheduled tomorrow with Mr. Shank, who's been leading the efforts in Trojan Academy. So I would say, you know, by the end of next week, we would have an answer.
Okay. Are we ready for a motion? And then, just remind the board, we will do a motion and a second, and then we will have discussion before we vote. Do we feel we're ready to put a motion on the board? Or, Mr. Roth, would you like to verbalize what your recommendation would be at this point? And again, that's, you know, coming from you and the rest of us, you know, we'll take that into account.
Sure. My recommendation is for K-12 to begin four-day in-person learning, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, beginning on January 25th.
And Wednesday would be used for?
Wednesday would be a remote day, would be used for interventions, any cleaning that needs to be done or some remote learning for our students.
Okay.
And it would be a last day, Dr. Steven Naylor-Wilson, that we would need substitutes. So it would mitigate the lack of substitutes one more day.
Right. Any other questions from the board that we would like to ask before we ask for a motion? And again, after the motions, we will have discussion again. With that being said, can I have a motion for the return to school? And please verbalize what your recommendation is.
I have a motion to approve Mr. Roth's four-day proposal, as is, as is stated.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Hammond, did you have that?
Yeah, I have. Chris made the motion and Susan made the second. To approve the motion, the recommendations of the superintendent as presented.
Okay. I think we repeated those several times. Anyone have a question clearly on what the motion would be? Okay, and again, last call for discussion.
Mr. Roth, just to be clear, this, the Health Department does support this four-day model, correct? So we are taking their advice into account and doing what they're asking us to do in regards to that?
Correct, as long as we are willing to continue to monitor data, which we have done all year. And if we see a spike based on any recommendation they would make, that we transition back to a hybrid or a remote model.
And we're using the data that Mrs. Miller has put together that's driving our decisions. And that's, we're gonna continue to maintain that. Is that correct as well?
That is correct.
Yep, that's accurate. Every day.
And that's where I think for me, it's important to use that science that's been proven to, to be able to drive our decisions.
I have no other discussion.
Then, Mr. Hammond, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Iyer?
No.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Mr. Aldrich?
Aye.
Dr. Steven Naylor-Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
We will get communication out to staff this morning. We will have a release to our parents and the community sometime late this morning, early afternoon.
Thank you.
Thanks, Troy.
Thank you, Mr. Roth.
Thank you. Appreciate everyone's time.
Just a reminder, 6:00 PM, we'll be at Glenwood for a work session. So we'll be back together again in person later this, later today.
Thank you.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
Move in second? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Mr. Hammond, did you get that? Okay?
I got it. Very good. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. See you later tonight. Thank you.